Okay.
That was close.
So, uh...
Zarker.
Zucker.
Zarker.
Zarker.
Did you want to make your announcement, or?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. This evening, I'd like to, there's going to be a little bit of a change to the agenda. As you can see, items number three and four, the two items that were at 225 Holman Road, the applicant has requested that the board withdraw those. And so, I believe that, I'd like to ask if the board would officially take action and remove those items from the, from the agenda this evening.
So, I think we need a yea or nay. All in favor of withdrawing those items from the agenda tonight signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Unanimous.
Okay.
Okay. So, for people that are in the audience, if you were here tonight because you were interested in those two agenda items concerning the property on Holman Road, you're certainly welcome to stay. We wouldn't want to kick you out, but if, if you don't have an interest in staying, you're certainly welcome to go as well. Okay? Thank you very much.
Good night.
The other, we have a couple of other agenda items tonight that are quasi-judicial, and so, people have the opportunity to speak. But if there's anything that you want to speak tonight about, I would ask that you fill out this sheet. It's in the, just on the other side of those doors. Fill this out and then get it to me so that you can be recognized to speak. Okay. There is nobody? Yes, sir. Let me see what you got. Okay. Dennis Warren. Dennis, you want to introduce yourself? Tell us where you live and tell us what you're here for.
Hi, my name is Dennis Warren, and I've been a resident here since 1968. And I had a townhouse over Washington. I sold it, and I purchased a piece of property on Seashell Lane, Harbor Heights.
Mr., I'm going to interrupt just for a second. Mr. Chairman, I think Dennis really wants to speak...
You want to wait till we get to those agenda items?
To that agenda item.
Okay. Is that all right?
Yeah. Point of order. Get to the agenda items.
Okay. We'll get to them. All right. So, I guess, so Dennis, I'll give you a call. I'll call you up when we get to those agenda items. Okay? So, the first item under new business approval of the meetings at the last minute, July 25th. I'm assuming that the fellow board members have had the opportunity to look over those minutes. Does anybody have any additions, corrections, or comments concerning those minutes? That being the case, all in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
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 All opposed? Minutes approved?
Mr. Price?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, they did a aye-nay call.
Oh, okay. It's different in code enforcement, so, sorry.
Okay. Rick Parker is not here.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, let me just explain that very quickly. Mr. Parker, who has applied to be a member of the P&amp;Z Board, was scheduled for an interview this evening, is not here. And I don't want the board to feel like it was Rick's, he was kind of blowing this off. I'm going to fall on my sword here and say that I, I'm not sure we, that we informed him of the meeting this evening. So, I don't want the board to hold that against him. I'll try to get him in front of the board at the next meeting.
Okay. Can he, does he have to be interviewed by us before he goes to City Council?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, we'll have to wait until the next P&amp;Z meeting to talk to him. Okay. Fine. Thank you. Well, with that in mind, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is turning out to be agenda item labeled number five here on our agenda packet tonight. And so, that deals with war and land use amendment, ordinance 012019. Dave, you want to talk to us a little bit about that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. As we usually do, I'd like to start with a few slides. I'm going to have to flip through a few of them. Here. Okay. Here we go. Here is a, just a basic aerial view of the piece of property. Obviously, it's designated by the red lines. It is in the, it's in the extreme west end of the Harbor Heights subdivision. I'm sure we're all familiar with this, or we should be. And you can see that the property is accessed by, internally through the Harbor Heights subdivision as well. Also, it's important to note that we have single-family homes on either side. We have a single-family home here, and we have a single-family home here. So, and you can see, obviously, there's single-family homes throughout. We also have some townhouses down here to the south of the, of the subject parcel. And we also have some higher-density residential up here to the north in Villages Project.
Point out where, uh, North Atlantic is?
I'm sorry. North Atlantic, Mr. Chairman, is right out here. And north is towards the top of the, top of the page.
Okay.
This is a, I'm sure we're all, there's a small Mexican restaurant here. And then, I don't recall, I want to say it's a 7-Eleven?
Circle K.
Circle K.
Circle K, yeah.
All right. Circle K, right here.
Okay.
So, point out, it's part of Harbor Heights.
Yes.
That's a pretty pertinent point, and you're skipping over.
I, I will get to that, Mr. Russell. I'm going to be showing you a, some plat maps and a few other things here shortly. And it's really interesting. The history on this piece of property is very, very interesting. Here's a street view looking north. This is basically when you come into the Harbor Heights entrance, and if you take an immediate left and you're heading down Seashell Lane, which we're on right now. This particular piece of property is right up in this area. It's between, it's just, it's just adjacent to this parcel, this single-family home. You can see the stand of trees right in that area. It's right in that area. Okay? This is looking south, and the piece of property, you can, again, I just, I included this so you can see the nature of the area. I'm sure we've all been in the subdivision. But this is, it's very obviously characterized by single-family homes. The parcel frontage on Seashell is just on the front end of this pickup truck. Okay. This is some interesting stuff. This is a, this is a zoning map from 1968, so the city was still in its infancy here. And you can see what's, you can see the Harbor Heights subdivision. And this is the Harbor Heights First Edition. And you can see there was a, the plat ended right here. And this piece of property was originally, well, I shouldn't say it originally. It was, it's always been zoned commercial from the city's inception. And, you know, obviously, that's why we're here this evening, to deal with that. But this was the, this lot, the eastern property line of this lot was the dividing line between the R1 in Harbor Heights and the C1, which ran up and down North Atlantic. Okay. Here's a copy of the plat, the Harbor Heights First Edition, 1961. This was actually platted before the city was a city. And the piece that we're talking about is this piece of property right in this area. And that's where the, that's where the R1 and C1 demarcation line was, is this property line. Boy, this thing is hard to handle sometimes. It goes backwards and forwards, and, see if I can get it down there where it needs to be. Yeah. This property line right here that runs kind of northwest and southeast, and then north-south in this area, that was the demarcation line between R1 to the, as we're looking at it, to the right or to the east. And then, all that unplatted property between the Harbor Heights plat and then highway number 401, which historically, North Atlantic was known as, that was all that C1 property. So, from what I can tell, this particular piece of property was not, or part of, it was not part of the original Harbor Heights plat. So, interesting stuff. Kind of fun to kind of dig back into the history of Cape Canaveral. Let's see. I think that may be it. Okay. No, I'm sorry. This is what we have today on the books. This arrow is identifying the piece, and you can see it's, it's red, so that's all that commercial zoning district we have in the North Atlantic corridor. And also, the other important thing is, as the P&amp;Z Board members know, we have two maps that we really deal with in our land use discussions. One is our zoning map, and the other is our future land use map. And the, in, in the city of Cape Canaveral, most of the properties are one in the same. If a piece of property is zoned C1, the future land use is C1, and that's the case here. Both, both the zoning and the future land use designation for this piece of property is C1. And I think that's it. I'll kind of get into my spiel here. And so, that's really what we're here to talk about. Mr. Warren, Dennis Warren, the applicant.
Can I stop you for one second with just one real quick question?
Yes.
Am I correct in understanding that there is a row of condominium buildings or multifamily buildings between North Atlantic and that particular piece of property that you want to rezone?
No.
There is not? Okay.
No.
Okay.
There is a, if, if, if the board member, if the board remembers, about a year ago, we came in, where my arrow is right now, we approved a site plan for a project for a real estate office, Pittman.
Oh, okay.
She came in and she got, she got site plan approval, and she had to get some variances because it's kind of a funky shaped, it's a very challenging shaped parcel. So, she had to get some variance as well. But, but no, there's that, that lot there between, that parcel there between North Atlantic and this particular piece of property.
Thank you, David.
I think at one point in time, back in, back in, since, you know, back when the, well, between now and sometime when the city was incorporated, I think a lot of this was one parcel, and I think over the years, it's been, it's been broken into two or three or four more, four pieces.
Right.
Chairman, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Dickey, the single home to the left of this property, it is also coded C1. How was that single home built, if it's a commercial property?
Very good question. Historically, the city of Cape Canaveral has allowed residential construction in commercially-zoned property through a special exception process. About two years ago, the City Council felt like that needed to be changed, and which they did. So, they, they removed the allowance for residential as a special exception in C1. So, that's no longer allowed. And that brings up a whole other kettle of fish. We're going to be, just, can I take just a very quick sidebar here?
Please do.
Or tangent. We're in the process of, there's approximately 750 parcels in the city that are zoned commercial that need to be rezoned to residential because of this issue. We're in the process of preparing a, a master rezoning, if you will, in conjunction with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. There are consultants on this, and we're working on that right now. So, we're, we're going to try to clean all this mess up, and, and, we'll be, this will be our first stop with that. We'll be coming to the Planning and Zoning Board, and we're going to, matter of fact, we're going to have a workshop on this exact issue on January, I think it's January 8th, here in this room. The Regional Planning Council will be, will be handling that. So, we're going to start the dialogue on that. But that's, that's a mammoth undertaking.
What, what's the subject of the workshop?
The workshop is going to be educating our residents, hopefully, the ones who this will be directly in effect on the rezonings that are going to have to happen. Because technically, right now, all these residential properties in these commercial zoning districts are non-conforming uses. And our code says if a non-conforming use gets destroyed, can't be rebuilt.
That non-conformity was a result of the council's action? I happen to be a part of that ancient history about commercial and residential along A1A. Long time ago, we tried to rezone the block, the entire block, all the way, all the way north-south along A1A. And the, had to go, we wanted to go one block deep to the next roadway, which is a natural boundary. And it was, it's always been commercial. We tried to rezone it residential. Or maybe it was the other way around. It was residential, and we tried to rezone it commercial. But the, the issue was, the, there was a 4-1 council in those days, and they were heavy landowners along that corridor. And they wanted all the options. And they wouldn't let the P&amp;Z Board rezone it to whatever, whichever way we wanted to go. So, they kept the option to put residential in commercial property with a special exception. And it existed for years. And it was always a pain in my anatomy, and it just never changed until recently. Finally, the council looked up and said, "All those landowners are gone." And they abolished the regulation. And what are we now at? What's our regulation now? We can't put residential in commercial? Is that it? Okay. So, they set it in concrete about two years ago.
Mm-hmm. That started the ball rolling. That was the first step. The next step is going to be the rezoning effort that we'll be dealing with probably for a while.
Right.
It's not going to happen overnight.
So, it's taken 25 years for this issue to cool off.
And, I mean, that's, that's a, it's a big issue. I mean, when you start, when you start saying, "Hey, we're going to take your commercial zoning from you, and we're going to change it to residential," you know, that's an issue.
And the landowners want it both ways.
Sure.
They want to have both options.
Yep. Yep. But, as I said, we've kind of started that ball rolling because now, we've got all these non-conforming residential structures out there, and if something happens, that's, that's a, that's a problem. So, we have to keep, keep going, keep stepping towards our end goal now.
Hurricane comes in and destroys their home, they can't rebuild.
Technically, that is correct. I'm sure, I'm sure we would have a workaround if something like that happened, but, you know, I think, I think we'll have it well on the way.
Under the current law, that's what it would be.
Under the current law, yeah.
The workshop on the 8th, is it appropriate for the Planning and Zoning Board to attend to listen, or should we not, since we would be a final review on that?
Well, I mean, I guess our city attorney can weigh in on this as well. I mean, there's, it's, I would say, you're more than welcome to be there. Certainly, don't talk to any, either, any of the other board members. Don't talk to the public about this because this will all be coming in front of you. And so, if there's any, you know, if there, and I would advise the, I don't know if you have any council here tonight. Oh, we do. Wes is here. I, you know, the same, same would go with, for the council, too. We just have to be very cautious about items that'll be coming in front of you at some point in the future.
You've said enough for me. I won't attend that meeting. Thank you.
Yeah. We will, this board would act as a local planning agency, as well as the zoning board...
Right.
...to finalize all that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah. Dave, just a point of clarification before we continue. Agenda items five and six pertain to the same property. Are we dealing with both agenda items at the same time right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the staff reports for both of them. We'll probably take separate actions when we get to the recommendation phase for the comp plan amendment, the one ordinance, and then we'll take separate action on the rezoning.
Well, a technical question. Normally, when we have an LPA action, we have made our, we have adjourned the P&amp;Z action, made ourselves come into order as LPA. Then, we left the LPA, and we, and we kept them separate. This is the first time I've ever seen an LPA action and a zoning action come together on the same agenda, which is okay in my way of thinking. The city attorney will have to figure that out. But if we're going to act as LPA, we need to be the LPA with an LPA vote. And if we're going to act as zoning board, we ought to be the zoning board with a zoning vote. Now, that's just my bird's eye look at it. You guys can sort that out.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know if Anthony has anything to say about that, but, you know, my...
The functioning as the LPA slash Planning and Zoning Board, I don't think you need to hold separate meetings or separate votes in two different capacities.
Right. That was my, that was kind of how I was operating. Yeah. Yeah. But what we will do is we will process the comp plan amendment first. We'll act on that because that really is kind of the, you know, until we get that squared away, that we keep, the zoning is, is, it's just kind of lays on top of the comp plan amendment. So, and the zoning, zoning ordinance won't take effect until the comp plan amendment is finally approved. So, yeah.
So, let's continue.
Where were we?
Now, we're back.
All right. I'm going to, I think those are all the slides that we, that I had prepared, so I'm just going to go through the, the agenda packet quickly. I know the board's had a chance to look at this, so I'll, I'll, I'll try to go through this, move through this quickly. Again, we're here to talk about a, both a comp plan amendment, which is ordinance 012019, and a rezoning, which is ordinance number 022019. And again, both of those are to change the designations from C1 to R1 in both the zoning and the comp plan, or land use designation. These, these are, these matters deal with 8811 Seashell Lane. The applicant has recently purchased it and with the intent of building a house. And obviously, for reasons we've discussed here this evening, that, that's a, that's a non-starter until these, until these ordinances are dealt with. Also, kind of as a sidebar, the property, a previous owner had platted these parcels into townhouse lots. So, there's currently three townhouse lots out on this, on this, on 8811. So, with a separate action, we're going to be taking what's called a unity of title action and, to the City Council, and we'll be, for purposes of creating a development parcel, we'll be creating one parcel through what's called a unity of title process. And that's a, again, that's a separate process, and the P&amp;Z Board won't be involved in that. But I just wanted to let you know that if you're familiar that, familiar with the, with those lots out there, and you go, "How can they build a house on three townhouse lots?" That's, that, that issue's being addressed also. Again, we've really talked all about the Harbor Heights and what we find in there. Again, Harbor Heights really consists of single-family homes. There are some, there are several townhouses to the south of this, but, you know, the vast majority of development in the, in the subdivision is, is single-family. Utilities are all provided, much like everything else, or most everything else in this city, by Cocoa Water and City Sewer. And I won't go through all these particulars on pages two and three, but those pages consist of some of the standards that need to be met when you're looking at amending a future land use designation and a rezoning request. I will say this, though, that I have reviewed those criteria, and as you can see in the staff report, it does indicate that the, all of the tests are being met. I will say that it's, it, and really, the, I think the bottom line, which I think we all need to really look at, is, is it compatible? Is what is being proposed compatible with what's out there and consistent with, with the applicable regulations? And it is. It is very much compatible. As a matter of fact, I, the neighborhood is, I think they're very excited about this because there's, there was always the opportunity for somebody to come in and put a commercial establishment there because all the zoning was in place and everything. And that, that certainly would have not been a good situation. So, I think what's being proposed here is, is very much a good thing for the neighborhood. And, again, the, the final sentence in the staff report, as indicated, the proposed comp plan amendment and rezoning are consistent with applicable state, city, and state standards. And that's, that's an important statement. The community development staff recommends that the P&amp;Z Board take the following actions. One ordinance, recommend approval to the City Council. One ordinance to number 012019, adopting a small-scale amendment to change the land use designation from C1 to R1 for, for the 8811 Seashell Lane. And number two, ordinance 022019, amending the zoning district from C1 to R1, again, for property with an address of 8811 Seashell Lane. And quickly, I'll go through the attachments that are in your packet. Attachment one is the aerial that we've, all familiar with, that we've actually discussed this evening. Attachment two is a street-level photo. It's a little old, but it's a, it was what Google Earth had available. And again, it's just to show the surrounding development is single-family. And then, attachment three is the zoning and future land use maps, currently what, what they are. You can see that currently, both it's C1 and the proposal is to change it to R1. And, Mr. Chairman, that pretty much wraps up my, my presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Anthony's here, and we have our applicant here.
We'll open it up to the board. This Warren, I promise we'll get to you. If necessary, we'll get to you. I'd like to open it up to the board first and see if there are any questions, comments, or concerns. Let's deal, first of all, with the 012019, the amendment. And because we have a vote on that, and then we'll come back and deal with the 02219, the rezoning, and vote on that separately. So, the first item would be, I said item number five. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns?
Do we not need a motion first for discussion? Okay.
I mean, you...
Tip, yeah, I mean, if you want to follow the Streck rules or Roberts rules of procedure, then...
Okay.
You typically don't, but...
First, not trying to figure out how we do it.
Yeah, no.
Typically, you do.
Okay. I'd like to just make a comment if I could.
Okay, sure.
Or if Melissa wants to go first, that's fine.
Penny, you can go first.
Okay. I'm very familiar with this area. I actually looked to buy at a couple of addresses in this neighborhood, including one of the townhouses just south of there. The property is, throughout there, mainly single residents. And even the backside of the three-unit townhouse, when you look at it from the street and the backside, you, you don't get that it's a townhouse. It really looks like a single-family home there, which is good for the neighborhood because the neighborhood, other than right at the entrance, there's a corner that curves into a, looks like five-section townhouse, rest of the neighborhood is, is single-family homes. So, using this for a single-family home seems to be very appropriate to me.
Melissa?
If we're just talking about the little first section, we had kind of four criteria to go over for the first part of the vote, and basically, what I get from it is, this is an opportunity to decrease density, which is something that we should be trying to do whenever we can. And so, on that, just on that small aspect, it makes sense to me.
Lamar?
Well, it's the request for rezoning. We're changing land use.
Yeah, we're, we're dealing with item number five, the amendment.
So, anyway, the request is consistent.
Yes.
I'm just going down to items two, three, and four in the staff report at the bottom of the sheet. It, it's very consistent with the comp plan. It's consistent with the property around it, compatible. And the, the last item, number four, says the proposed rezon would allow for continuation of the established land use plan. And if that's not compatibility, I haven't seen it. So, this is a property that is totally compatible with, with the zoning that we're addressing tonight, and I, I think it's a good way to go.
Thank you, Lamar. Harry?
I could go along with that, but I am one to check the, the attorney probably is thinking of what this property is right now because it goes way back when they applied to, by special exception, to rezon from C1 to R3, and then they were going to propose three townhouses in that property. And then they were going to propose three townhouses in that property. To my knowledge, that, that never went away. It was turned down by the board, turned down by the council, went to court, and the ruling came back that they would be allowed to build three houses, three townhouses on this property. Has, has that now gone away because of the changes you mentioned a couple of years ago? When all special exceptions were, has that special exception disappeared? I'm not sure. That's really what I'm saying.
You have a good memory, Harry? In fact, that's what I wanted, I wanted to address from years ago. David, in your professional opinion, I mean, this request meets all of the criteria in the code, both for a comp plan amendment and a rezoning, correct?
That is correct.
So this parcel of land at one point was not three townhomes. The, a previous property owner actually years ago wanted to construct either a commercial development on that property, or wanted to construct a commercial development on that property. That caused a lot of community angst, of course, because it's smack in the middle of the entrance of a residential neighborhood. That proposal morphed into a townhouse proposal for three units. Not a single-family home, but a townhouse. That was not well-received either because if you looked at both sides of these, of this property, there's two single-family homes, right? And being single-family homes across the street. The board, in considering the special exception request for townhouses, denied the request. The property owner appealed to the circuit court. And on the record that was presented, the court reversed the board's decision. And the property owner went forward and actually platted the property into three townhouses, at least lots. And that property has remained in that condition since then. So come full circle, you actually have an individual that wants to build a single-family home, which would have been very well-received many years ago, rather than the commercial and the townhouse project. So he, in order to do that, because the special exception ordinance was changed and you no longer can get approval for residential use in a commercial zone, we have to go through this comp plan change and a rezoning change to R1, to accommodate a single-family home. One catch, however, and my recommendation would be that both ordinances have a condition that, as Dave mentioned, a unity of title be approved as a condition of both these ordinances because you can't get a single-family home because there's three townhouse lots on, on the property currently. So the unity of title is necessary in order to implement the R1 zoning and comp plan designation. So because it's necessary, it needs to be a condition, in my opinion, for both, for both ordinances. We've come full circle in over 15 years, probably.
Thank you, Anthony. Tony, or Harry, does that answer your question?
No, as what I had to note that-
Okay.
That this, right now-
Okay.
It's not, it is three townhouses.
That's going to be undone.
It's not commercial.
Okay.
Anthony, tell us, give us the words to attach as a condition. If, I don't know that we're going to make the motion or not, and we probably will, but always possibility we don't, but what are the words? We, "I move so-and-so-and-so with the condition," and then what are the words?
It's, "Subject to a unity of title agreement, aggregating the three townhouse lots into one lot to construct a single-family home."
Okay. It would be wise for whoever makes the motion to ask you to put those, put those words in as the condition on the recording, if we do that.
Thank you, Lamar. Okay, my input, just to make it short and sweet, is, this seems to be, to me, to be a no-brainer that for the sake of density and everything else, we would want to approve this. With that in mind, Mr. Warren, is there anything that you want to say?
Yeah.
Why don't you then come up, introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm David Warren, and like I said earlier, I've been a resident here since, oh, since 1968. And I took an interest in the Seashell Lane lot. And I knew it was going to be quite a ordeal to make this happen. And I'm grateful for Dave, he's been helping me a lot. I mean, it's, it's been complex, and I'm willing to take it on. And some of the history over the last 11 months, I hired John Campbell. He's already come out of the site, he's already drawn the plot to make it from three to one. That's been completed, it's just a matter of working it through the city. So when it happens, it will become one plot. And we've done all the paperwork to make this C1 to R1. And as far as I know, more than Dave, we've done it and we can, we're getting the final approval. And I spoke to the neighbors and they all supported their, they didn't like the idea of townhouses going there. And I spoke to Dream Homes, who was going to build the townhouses there. And, you know, they, they had every intent of doing it. And if it wasn't for the roadblocks that they faced, they would have. But that was the history I got to have on first lot. And the main thing that, I think, set them back was the setback was different then, and that was a problem. So as far as I know, everything that we needed to work out to make this happen with a residential house is, is pretty much complete. And the only thing we're working on is the drainage control and the car. And that's probably 90% complete. We're just going to make a few alterations and that's all we need. The only thing is the rezoning and the drainage.
All right, Mr. Warren, thank you very much. All right. Coming back to the board, any other questions, comments or concerns? And I think it's time for a motion on agenda item number five, the quasi-jurisdictional, yeah, the consideration recommendation of city council, ordinance number 01-2019 to amend the future use map for C, from C1 to R1 for a property at 8811 Seashell Lane. Do we have a motion?
I move that the planning and zoning board accept the ordinance number 01-2019, adopting a small-scale amendment to change the land use designation from C1 to R1 for property with an address of 8811 Seashell Lane. With, subject to, see if I've got the words correct here, attorney, to a unity of title to aggregate the title into one plot.
Second, then.
Okay, we have a motion from Penny, a second with, from Harry. Would you call the roll, please?
Price.
For the motion.
Mr. Russell.
Four.
Mr. Pierce.
Four.
Ms. Bass.
Four.
Ms. Zucker.
Four. Zerker. Z-E-R-K-E-R.
Okay.
So it's unanimous, everybody's four?
And now, Mr. Chairman, we'll need a separate, I guess, public hearing and motion for the 02-2019.
So we move on to agenda item number six.
Yeah.
It's the consideration recommendation of city council for ordinance 02-2019 to rezone a parcel located at 8811 Seashell Lane from C1 to R1.
Chairman, under the circumstance, Dave, I don't think you need another hearing. I mean, you can have a consolidated hearing, it's the same property going to R1. I mean, the only issue is whether or not, in your professional opinion, you think that this, that this application meets the criteria in, in the zoning code. I think we've got all the background information on this, so I think any additional testimony would be redundant.
Okay.
Whatever the board's prerogative is.
Can we move on then for a motion?
It sounds like the city attorney is suggesting you can do.
All right, let's open it up for a motion for agenda item number six, considering to rezone the parcel located at 8811 Seashell Lane from C1 to R1.
But the same, I'm recommending with the same condition.
With the same.
The unity of title aggregating the three lots into one.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Penny made the motion, Lamar second. Call the roll, please.
Price.
For the motion.
Mr. Russell.
Four.
Pearson.
Four.
Ms. Bass.
Four.
Ms., I'm sorry.
Z-E-R-K-E-R. Zerker.
Four.
So sorry.
Again, it's unanimous.
You have this.
Two syllables.
Okay. All right, we move on then to the last agenda item for this evening. It's a consideration recommendation of city council regarding ordinance number XX-2018, amending section 82 of the city code to adopt the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code. City of the Cape Canaveral is the applicant. Dave, do you want to talk about that?
Yes, I do. As the, Mr. Chairman indicated, this is a, a discussion, this is an ordinance that has been prepared by the city attorney to adopt the latest addition of what's called the International Property Maintenance Code and the, or IPMC for short. And the IPMC is essentially a standalone code that's prepared by the same organization that prepares a lot of the other code books that are, that are Building Department, ICS, that they prepare. However, the IPMC is specifically dealing with code enforcement issues. And we, we currently use the IPMC, but as your, as your staff report indicates, we are currently using the 1998 edition of the IPMC. So we're basically using a 20-year-old document. And the IPMC is revised every three years. So you can see just my, my planner math, that's, you know, roughly six or seven editions that have come and gone since the last time we, we updated our code. I don't know how it, well, I'll get into that in just a second. You know, the, the, again, the IPMC is a, as I said, it's a standalone code. However, the IPMC gives our code enforcement officers specific details on expectations and standards for, as the, as the code title says, property maintenance. And, you know, obviously, there's been a lot of changes that have occurred to best practices and accepted standards in 20 years. And we're missing, we're, I'll just, I'll editorialize and say we're missing the boat because we don't, we aren't able to leverage the, these, these new codes and standards for, for our code enforcement use. So what we're doing is, is making a recommendation to adopt the 2018 IPMC. Anthony has gone through the code and made some changes that are contained in the proposed ordinance to tailor it to the city of Cape Canaveral. So it's, it's, there really aren't what I would call substantive changes to the, the, the 2018 code that's, that's proposed, that, that, you know, that, that was promulgated. And it, it has gone to council, I think this, this, this issue has gone to council in, in the, in the past, and I addressed that in the staff report. I wasn't here when that happened, so I can't specifically say why it never got to, got to an up or down vote in front of the council. But I know it's been to the council several times, there were some concerns expressed by the council. And for one reason or another, it just, it never got past that discussion phase. It never got to what I would say a vote. So that's what we're doing. I mean, we've, we've heard from the city council as late as our last strategic planning retreat that we had with our council. And they indicated that code enforcement was very important. And they indicated that they would be very supportive of providing our code enforcement officers with tools to do a better job at what they do. And this is definitely one of those tools. Our code enforcement officers are, they're very well-equipped to implement the new standards in this code. They're chomping at the bit, frankly. And it will help, will help them greatly when they go out and meet with property owners and they can get, you know, some property owners want specifics. Well, where does it say that? Where does it say that? And the, this, this code will, it, it's very detailed and it spells everything out. You know, and so for that purpose, we're, we're, we're moving this forward. Now, although this is not what I would say a land use code, this is really dealing with code enforcement issues, our, our, our code says that any time a change to chapter 110 is being proposed, it has to first go to the planning and zoning board before it goes to the city council. So that's really why we're here this evening. I, I don't expect the code, the, the P and Z board members to, to have read the entire IPMC and code and know it backwards and forwards. That's not really what, what your role here is with the city.
I thought you were going to read it to us.
Ooh, you don't want, do not want that. But as, as our code says, we, we need a recommendation from this board before we take it to the council. So that's really what we're here doing this evening. You know, all I can say is from a staff perspective, this is long overdue and it's something we need in our toolbox to, to help our code enforcement officers do a, I don't want to say a better job, but do a, a more thorough job. And so, Mr. Chairman, we're recommending that the P and Z board recommend approval of this particular ordinance. We don't, we have not assigned it a name yet or a number, but we're recommending approval.
All right. With that, we'll open it up to the board for questions, comments and concerns.
And I will say, our, if there's any, if you want to get into, I was going to say more technical conversations, Anthony is probably more prepared to, or equipped to discuss those than I am, but he is, but Anthony is available.
Okay, thank you. So open it up to the board. Melissa, we'll start with you.
Not too much to say, just in my experience with building codes, those things change every couple of years drastically and for the better. So I can't imagine operating off a 20-year-old building code. So I figure we, we better get with the program and get this thing updated.
Okay, thank you. Penny?
The one thing I would say is I hope once this is approved, we do keep up with the changes that occur. I know this type of stuff does change regularly. It's good for our citizens to have detailed, good, updated code so they can get in and understand and know what they're looking for, as well as for our, our staff to be able to explain it to them. When you don't, I know from experience, if you don't have the latest and greatest in, in what makes things easy for the citizens as well as staff, it's a problem. So that would be my only thing, I hope we would continue making sure it stays up to date.
Thank you, Penny. Harry? Questions? Okay. Lamar?
With full confidence in Anthony's preparation of this thing, I made myself read it last night, and you don't want to do that again.
Trouble sleeping?
But, but for what it's worth to you, let that be my support of the, of the ordinance. Let's, let's pass it.
Thank you, Lamar, and I would be for it as well. So with that in mind, let's go ahead and get a motion. So we need a motion adopting the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code as amended. Do we have a motion?
I move that we recommend approval and acceptance of this code.
Lamar's made the motion.
Second.
Penny, second. Would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Mr. Russell.
Four.
Mr. Pearson.
Four.
Ms. Bass.
Four.
Ms. Zucker.
Four.
I am so sorry.
Okay, unanimous again, thank you. All right, we move on to, um, reports and open discussion. Is there anybody on the board that wants to report on anything or talk about anything in particular? Not hearing anybody, we'll assume that's not the case. So we move on to adjournment. All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, everybody, for coming.